Here we will begin. Greetings, now is the time and place for a meeting of the Beaverton Planning Commission. For the record, I will do a roll call to verify which commission members are participating this evening. Let the record show, we have Commissioners Ellis, Commissioner Lawler, Commissioner Winter, and myself. Let the record show that Commissioners Adams, Glenn Winkle, and Nye are absent and excused. So we are now at Commission Communications. Commissioners, do you have anything to share today? I don't see any, so let's move on to Staff Communications.
Good evening, Commission, Anna Slatinsky, Planning Division Manager in the Community Development Department in Beaverton. I do not have any staff comments tonight.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on. The only item on the agenda is the continuance from October nine, twenty twenty four, meeting of the uh of the, for the application for LU three, twenty twenty three dash zero zero five five seven, Ash Creek Play School, case file number CU three, twenty twenty three dash zero zero five five five, and DR one, twenty twenty four dash zero 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 nine. The applicant has the burden of proving that the applications are consistent with the Beaverton Development Code, Comprehensive Plan, and any applicable Beaverton Code provision. The criteria that must be addressed in the hearing are Development Code Sections forty point zero three point one, Facilities Review Committee, forty point one five point one five point four C, Major Modification of a Conditional Use, forty point twenty point one five point one C, Design Review Compliance Letter. Testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed toward these approval criteria or other criteria in the Comprehensive Plan or Development Code that the speaker believes to apply to the application. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to allow the Planning Commission and other interested parties an opportunity to respond to the issue may preclude an appeal to Land use Board of Appeals based on that issue. Anyone who submits written comments or gives oral testimony has standing to appeal this decision. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to the proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the city to respond to the issue may preclude an action for damages in Circuit Court. State and local law require Commissioners to make certain disclosures. To these ends, the following question will be asked. Does any commissioner have a potential or actual conflict of interest? Exparte contacts or site visits to declare. Commissioner Ellis.
Uh, no, just reiterating my comment from last time. Um, I live relatively next door to the proposed site. Um, have played on and have been around their grounds numerous times, but I, I don't consider that to be um, a uh, conflict of interest of any kind.
Thank you. Commissioner Lawler.
Uh, I don't have any conflicts, and I conducted a site visit before the last hearing, but did not go back.
Commissioner Winter.
I did not make a specific site visit. I'm familiar with the site from previous set, previous applications. I had, had no contact.
Okay, thank you. And I would say no to all three. I did want to state that while I was not in attendance on the October ninth meeting, uh, I did spend this last week watching the video and feel like I'm caught up and able to participate uh, and up to speed with where last, the discussion went on the ninth. So does any member of the audience wish to question a commissioner about ex parte contacts or site visits or challenge the right of any commissioner to participate in this hearing? Um. Okay. Should be looking at attendees, and I do not see any, so let the record show no response. The order of the public hearing tonight will be as follows. City staff will give a presentation followed by Commissioners' questions of staff. The applicant will be given twenty minutes for its presentation, followed by the Commission's questions of the applicant. Then members of the public in support of the application can speak for up to five minutes each. Then members of the public opposed to the application can speak for up to five minutes each. And then members of the public who are neither in support nor opposed will then have five minutes to speak. After public testimony, the applicant will have five minutes for rebuttal. The Planning Commission will then hear any final comments from staff. We will now begin with the staff presentation.
Thank you, Chair McCann. Uh, good evening Commissioners, my name is Steve Regner, uh, Senior Planner with the City of Beaverton Planning Division. Uh, the application before you tonight is LU three, twenty twenty three, zero zero five five seven, Ash Creek Play School. Um, as Chair McCann mentioned, this is continued um, from the initial hearing on October ninth. Um, since that was just a couple of weeks ago, I'm not going to go into too much detail. Um, but I am just going to remind Commission that there are two applications um, for the Commission tonight. First is a major modification of the conditional use focused on the enrollment increase for the childcare facility. And second is the Design Review Compliance Letter, uh, which is a retroactive approval uh, for the play area expansion. I should note that the conditional use is focused on the childcare facility itself um, and does not take into account or consider other activities that happen on church grounds. The review of this is purely for uh, the uh, childcare facility that exists there today. I will remind Commission that there are several supplemental memos in addition uh, to the staff report. Uh, there was one supplemental, supplemental memo on October second, two on October eighth, and three on October ninth. Uh, those were all provided to the Commission prior to the initial hearing. Uh, subsequently, uh, staff has received additional information from the applicant as well as additional testimony. Uh, those have been provided uh, to the Commission in two separate memos, both dated today, October twenty third. Uh, based on all the information uh, provided by the applicant uh, prior to tonight's hearing as well as the information in the supplemental memo, as well as all public testimony received um, today and, and prior to today's hearing. Uh, staff continues to recommend approval of the two land use applications for Ash Creek Play School. Um, consistent with the October second staff report as well as the conditions of approval recommended within that report. Uh, that concludes staff's presentation, and we are prepared to answer any questions that the Commission may have.
Thank you. Commissioners, are there any questions of staff with regard to the proposed application? Commissioner Ellis.
Uh, hey, uh, Steve, thank you for the refresh. Just to, and this is maybe more of a process question, but just to validate that with the supplemental materials received since then, you're affirmatively stating that, that none of the new materials materially change your positions from the original staff report. Am I understanding that right?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, gotcha.
Are there any other questions? Does not look like it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
On to the applicant's presentation. The applicant will now have twenty minutes to present. Please begin by introducing yourselves and stating your names and addresses for the record.
Chair McCann and Planning Commissioners, my name is Daniel Hauser. Uh, I am representing the applicants. I have Jenna Hori uh, joining me to assist with any questions as well. My address is one nine six nine six Southwest Murphy Street in Aloha, Oregon. Well, thank you all for taking the time from, to hear from us again. Um, in respect of your time, I will briefly recap our prior points and focus on what seemed like the area of commission interest last time, noise. First, Washington County is a childcare desert for kids age zero to five, meaning there is less than one slot available for every three kids. Ash Creek provides twenty slots today and expanding to meet the needs we see from community members will be a small step forward in helping address this community need. Second, the old conditional use permit was approved with old norms and expectations around childcare providers. It was three decades ago. Today, having a ten student to one teacher ratio is unacceptable, and we want to meet the moment by being allowed to grow to sixty students and ten teachers at any one time. Third, we went through how our application for a major modification of a conditional use permit and the design review letter on the playground meet the approval criteria. And we're grateful the city staff's impartial review has recommended approval. One part I'll emphasize is how well we align with the city's comprehensive plan. The major themes of livability, equity, sustainability, and resiliency align with our school's location, function, and curriculum perfectly. Having a walkable, safe, integrated playground at school is well aligned with other areas of, of the plan too. We were deeply grateful for the families and neighbors who testified in support of the application a couple of weeks back. However, we didn't want to organize or actively encourage additional testimony tonight, repeating those points in respect for the Planning Commission's time and patience. Onto the noise. I, I can assure you, as a group of parent volunteers, we know our kids can be loud and boisterous when they're playing and having fun. That's part of it, and I can't imagine anyone thinks it would be a good outcome for them to be quiet and docile when playing outside. That said, we do appreciate some neighbors don't enjoy hearing these sounds, don't enjoy having them reach their properties, and we've taken steps to try and mitigate that impact. First, our application limits the children playing outside to twenty at any one time, except for transition periods as classes are coming in or going outside. We've also voluntarily limited the time kids outs, uh, the time kids will be available to play outside to three hours per day. And that's actually fewer hours outside than is currently permitted. Uh, our current conditional use permit would allow us to have twenty kids outside at any time uh, during the school day. And second, we've installed a new fence and a gate to more clearly separate the playground. We've also committed to adding signage as appropriate and planting more native plants in that vegetative corridor between the playground and neighboring properties in alignment with the Clean Water Services guidance. And allegations that we are in violation of Beaverton Noise Code or the Oregon Department of Environmental Quality Rules are misguided. An acoustic engineer, as noted in the record, evaluated these claims and did not find any merit to them. And in fact, they note we are exempt as a school playground at a church used by a nonprofit preschool in Beaverton. Our testimony, testimony highlights the Beaverton Code citations that make this clear, uh, that Steve and staff have put on the record. So while we are exempt, we still want to be good neighbors and have taken the previously noted steps to mitigate sound impacts. As we have hopefully made clear now a second time, Beaverton and our neighborhood need accessible, affordable, high-quality preschool options, and Ash Creek is delivering those services today. Being able to expand to meet our community's growing needs with these services is a rational step and is done with careful consideration for mitigating any perceived impacts on surrounding households. We'd appreciate the Planning Commission approve our design review letter and major modification for our conditional use permit applications. Thank you, and my colleague Jenna and I are happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, are there any questions of the applicant with regard to the application? I do not see any. Thank you very much for your presentation. So we are now at the public testimony portion for this agenda item. We will call for testimony in groups, starting with those in favor of the application, then those in opposition to the application, then those neither in favor nor in opposition. As a reminder, testimony is limited to the criteria that apply to the application. So now is time, it is time for testimony in favor of the op, application. For those viewing via Zoom webinar, please communicate by using the raise hand feature in your Zoom menu bar. If calling in, press star nine to alert the chair that you would like to speak. The Commission calls Doug, Doug, uh, please, uh, when you come on, please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, thank you, uh, Doug Gordon, and uh, my address is one zero zero five zero Southwest, one hundred fifty first place. This is a procedural question. Um, I, I had submitted a uh, request for continuance. The um, reason I'm raising it now is because already uh, the applicant's representative has gotten into a discussion about the submitted engineering report. And uh, I think it's prejudicial to those in opposition uh, to have evidence before the Commissioners on that. Uh, until we have an opportunity to respond, we do intend to hire an acoustical engineer to respond to what is a very deeply flawed uh, engineering report. It's prejudicial to have it uh, in evidence at this point.
Thank you. Uh, it looks like uh, our attorney has joined. Um, Doug, was that your, was that kind of the question?
Uh, yes, I, no, I submitted a letter to that effect, but uh, yes, that's the, that's the essence of it.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, Planning Commissioners, Robin McIntyre, excuse me, Assistant City Attorney. Uh, so you know, this is the time to testify in favor, and uh, there is, you have received uh, requests in the record, letters, and other evidence, and um, excuse me, getting over a cold. And you do have discretion on whether to grant a continuance. It is not uh, statutorily required, so I do want to add that, but um, you know, the time for the current test, this is the ti, time for testimony in favor. If um, people want to testify in opposition and request a continuance at that time as part of their testimony, that is fine.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Ellis, did you have a question?
Yeah, sorry, I was uh, just along the same lines, uh, Chair. I was going to ask this question once we got to the um, uh, Commission Conversation Section after the public testimony. I was going to ask this exact question around, should we consider this at that point? So I don't know if we want to park it until that moment, and then as a group, we can, we can ask that amongst ourselves, but, but go ahead and do the, 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 the other steps as per usual.
So I think it sounds like we need to park it for the moment um, while we get through the public testimony, and then we can have that discussion. If that's the, the move we want to make. So again, um, I invite anyone who wishes to speak in favor of the application. Do we have anyone wishing to speak in favor today? I am not seeing any hands raised, so we will move on to uh, those who wish to speak in opposition to the application. Um, for those viewing via Zoom webinar, please communicate by using the raise hand feature in your Zoom menu bar, or if you're calling in, press star nine to light, alert the chair that you would like to speak. I see Ronald Sattler, uh, the, please, please state your name and address for the record. Ronald, are you able to speak? Cause you seem to be muted still, so I need you to unmute if you can.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, now we can. Now you can begin.
Who knew?
Not sure how much you said while you were muted, but go ahead and start now.
Ron Sattler, S A T T L E R, one zero one seven zero Southwest one forty ninth Terrace. I'm immediately at the southeast corner of the church uh, parking lot and property. The church building itself, the addition uh, is, I don't know, hundred feet away from my property. It's very close. So I will go through some items for you to consider that I don't believe the staff considered. There are a variety of them, but I'm going to go through them quickly. Um, neither myself nor any of my neighbors received any notice of the last meeting or this meeting. That's unusual. In any event, um, Ash Creek is separate from Murray Hill uh, Church. Uh, it's not part of it. It's not overseen by the church. It's totally separate, which uh, has been alleged by the applicant. Um, I provided a, a map to planning that showed of the twenty-five neighbors that are adjacent to the property, the church property, twenty-four signed a letter, which you have the wet signatures of, uh, separate letters that indicate that they did not want to see this approved. That's twenty-four out of twenty-five property owners adjacent to the church property. The uh, there's a representation that this benefits the neighborhood. I see it as a complete defect. I've been doing residential real estate for fifty-two years. I drafted the sale agreement that most realtors use now. I've testified uh, for the State of Oregon Real Estate Agency. I've done several dozen expert witness testimonies. I'm very familiar with residential real estate. I believe I can prove quantitatively, since I have a degree in mathematics, that value decrease, if this is granted to twenty uh, or to ten students and, and up to sixty pupils, will cause a value decrease of the adjoining properties, and I'm estimating that to be five to ten percent. Um, one of the things that we have to do as a realtor, or in my case, a principal broker, is we have to disclose to buyers any obvious defects in the neighborhood. This would be something that all agents will have to disclose. That's not going to help the values. Um, the uh, we were told that uh, before the last meeting, about two hours before the final signature on the application uh, for this conditional use permit was finally signed. Um, we don't have in the attachments to this meeting an application that's signed by anybody. If there is one, I don't know where it is, but we don't see it. We also don't have the uh, letter from the church discussing that the applicant in this case uh, through Jenna Hori, I believe her name is. Um, there's no signed letter of an agent from the church to that person. We've asked for it numerous times, doesn't appear to exist. Um, most of the congregants that belong to the church, the church itself, are not members of the neighborhood. I've talked to many, many, many of them. The children that attend the preschool are not members of the church in general, and they don't live in our neighborhood. The two people in our immediate neighborhood that are adjacent to the property, church property, that have small children, do not send them to that preschool. They send them to Southwest Bible Preschool. Um.
Ron, you have about twenty seconds left if you want to wrap up.
Okay, the uh, noise in the report, the gentleman said, play, uh, the playground noise is inaudible to my house. Per his map and presentation, that's fantasy. My little home office that I use is on the south side of the property, away from the church. I have wood-framed windows and double-pane windows and six-inch walls, which is unusual for the neighborhood, and I can hear the kids right through into my little office. Um, I don't know what he was measuring, but he certainly wasn't measuring the actual noise. Basically, um, the uh, traffic report was produced by David Evans and Associates.
Okay, Ron, you're, you're up on your time.
Well, I'll finish this last sentence then.
Okay.
Um, David Evans and Associates is where Jenna Hori works. That's not normal. You don't have the company you work for give you an unbiased opinion about anything. In this case, traffic. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions of the speaker? It doesn't look like it. Thank you for your testimony. The Commission calls David Goldar. Please state your name and address for the record, and you have five minutes to.
Good evening Commissioners, my name's David Goldar. I reside at one oh one seven five Southwest one forty ninth Terrace here in Beaverton. My house is the next-door neighbor to the church and is the one closest. It's only a hundred feet from Ash Creek's operations. I've lived here for over twenty-five years. I spoke extensively last time, all uh, an interest of time for all of you, highlight some additional new points from some of the new material that was submitted. First of all, we're not here in opposition to any kids. We're parents ourselves, and we understand. Our opposition is to decide design and the lack of mitigation of the noise. That's why you heard so many neighbors and see so many that are concerned. This is about a noise issue and the fact that it's not mitigated and the impact that that's having since we can't use parts of our homes at times. There's two new issues I wish to bring up. First of all, in looking at the staff report and also the narrative, I point to forty point oh three point one point K, which is disability access. Um, unfortunately, nobody has looked at the public playground. It has not been examined for disability access. They only looked at the building. This is more than likely an oversight. I understand that. Nonetheless, it's against the law. No one has come in to find if it's compliance with ADA access. And in looking at it, you can tell that anybody who has some type of disability is going to have challenges. I know that because one of my children uses a wheelchair. Certainly, this is something that has to be fixed. The church should know better. Ash Creek should know better. It's up to this Commission to make sure that it's corrected, but unfortunately, it violates the. But unfortunately, it violates the approval criteria. So number seven is violated. De-livability is violated. Uh, we can point to several areas. Comprehensive plan, I think we all know this needs to be corrected. Somebody needs to actually go out there, figure out what's going on, and get it fixed. Second, I will address some of the issues that are brought up with the noise study, um, that was submitted. I'm glad the applicant finally submitted it since they've had it for nearly two years. He'll note on the very last page of it, it actually makes a recommendation for a sound wall. The expert in this case hired by the church is recommending a sound wall. If that doesn't point to there's an issue here, I don't know what does. Yes, there's a noise problem and it needs to be addressed. Speaking to the applicant's statement stating that they are not, uh, subject to DEQ noise requirements, I will point you to a letter from acoustical expert that is in the record that was submitted on ten nine and on page twenty to twenty-three, Mr. Kerry Stanley. Who's a well-known acoustical expert, and I will read from this. And page two says, B D C sixty point fifty point twenty-five eleven, which I think is now ten, but just amended. Noise levels shall meet the standards established by the State of Oregon Department of Environmental Quality. He goes on to say, because Ash Creek Play School is a commercial business operating within the church facilities, the noise associated with the business will be regulated by the standards in O A R three forty dash zero three five dash zero zero three fives. Ladies and gentlemen, that's the DEQ. And that is a state statute that we have to also be in compliance with these rules. Ash Creek, even though they are a nonprofit, are categorized as a commercial noise source. As such, the report that you have before you, the noise report, was prepared for the church, which falls under different requirements. It was not prepared for Ash Creek, which has different noise standards. Even saying that, you can look at the noise report itself and some of the figures that are in it. With only ten kids, they're already approaching the more lenient numbers that are allowed by the DEQ for the church. What's gonna happen when we get this to sixty? What's gonna happen when you double the amount of kids that can get out there? Of course, we're gonna have problems. This in particular violates condition, or I should say, approval criteria six. Approval criteria six basically states that you cannot change conditions of approval unless, uh, you satisfy fifty point nine five point seven. Fifty point nine five point seven D, which is what the applicant has applied for, states a new or modified condition will be, would better accomplish the purpose of the original condition. Ladies and gentlemen, the conditions of approval in the CUPs of before you were put in place to minimize the impact of the livability and use of the nearby residential homes, as I stated last time. There is no factual evidence in anything submitted by the applicant that shows what they're proposing does a better job of minimizing the impact of noise in particular to the livability and use of nearby residential homes. As a result by law, this proposal and application have to be declined. There simply is nothing in here that proves that fact. In fact, if we use common sense, if we triple the enrollment, we all know the noise is gonna increase. Their own flawed traffic study shows there's increased traffic that automatically violates approval criteria six. I can also point to the approval criterias for livability and livability within the comprehensive plans, but I think we have already made our points on this, and I don't wish to take up any more staff time as well as the commissioner's valuable time. With that, the last things I just simply wish to point out is there are numerous flaws with this application. We have pointed that out throughout the process to city staff, and for whatever reason, that is falling on deaf ears. And this is why we find ourselves with continuances and needing to come before you and take up three hours of your time last time and multiple hours this time. So I ask this committee, please fix this issue, decline this application, and invite the applicant to sit down with their neighbors and come with a good application that all of us can support. Cause we all wanna support them. We believe in childcare for crying out loud. We just wanna live in our homes in peace, and I don't think that's too much to ask. So with that, I'll close out my comments. I thank the committee again for its time. I thank staff for its time as well as everybody else who has put time into this effort. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions of the speaker? Doesn't look like it. Thank you very much. So next up, the commission calls Anne Ferro. Sorry, if I say this wrong, Ferro. Um, please state your name and address for the record. Anne, we cannot hear you. Hello? Think that we are having a connection issue here. Anne, we might have to have you, uh, hang up and log back in and try this again. And in the meantime, we can move on to the next speaker, and hopefully you can rejoin us and we can get the audio working for you. So next up, I will call Doug. Um, please state your name and address for the record. Doug, you are muted.
Doug Gordon, thank you, uh, Commissioners. I've already stated my address. Before the clock begins running, um, may I address the procedural question about the continuance?
Uh, no, this is a time for, I mean, you, if you would like to ask for a continuance within your testimony as, um, the city attorney recommended, um, that is your option. Um, but this is the time for testimony in opposition to the application.
All right, thank you. Let me just lay that out very quickly. My request would be that, uh, there'd be a continuance and for a reasonable time to give, uh, me an opportunity to submit a, uh, acoustical engineering report, uh, in response to the ABD engineering report, which was just filed by the, uh, appellant, and that, uh, the commissioners not consider either of the documents until both are, uh, on the record. I'd like to, um, uh, what I'm going to say now, I try to say without prejudice to that. Just, uh, on the personal information, I, I live immediately adjacent to the church property, been there since nineteen ninety-six. Um, I'm about sixty, seventy feet away from the playground. There are some, uh, fir trees and some wild growth between the landscaping, the wild growth and whatnot is totally useless. It does not in any way reduce, uh, the, uh, way that the noise, uh, carries. Uh, the evidence, I think, is overwhelming now. There is a major noise problem. There's a major disturbance to, uh, those of us that live, uh, nearby the church and church playground. It's having a major impact on our livability, which is a, uh, required goal to, uh, uh, achieve any, uh, comprehensive plans. There's no question, but this is a public playground as well, and that's a major part of the problem. Uh, the testimony is that it was created in, uh, to be a public playground, and it's been used as a public playground ever since, and signage has been put on uh, ever, uh, since it was, uh, begun, uh, to invite the public in. I wanna come back to that in a minute, but my, uh, uh, the, uh, comments I'm trying to make now are to address, uh, approval criteria five relating to, uh, location size, functional characteristics of the proposal, such that they can be made reasonably compatible and have a minimum impact on livability. Uh, in that regard, uh, there were some questions at the last hearing about the, uh, authority of, uh, the commission to impose, uh, conditions on any approval. And, uh, since the staff report makes an approval, I wanna say these, uh, uh, things. Uh, first of all, on page six of the staff report, uh, the, uh, senior planner uh, does state that the commission has authority to add conditions of approval to mitigate any noise concerns related to the use of the play area. You do have that power, and I'm asking you to exercise it here. I would like to comment, uh, in that regard on the, uh, supplemental statement, which was filed, uh, a day or two ago. Uh, and is on record, uh, from, uh, the applicant. They're talk, they talked about mitigation, existing mitigation. Uh, nothing really here addresses noise. As far as the children being on the playground, that's no change from, uh, what they're already doing. Uh, they're on, uh, right now, they're on about two hours a day. I know because I hear them. And, uh, I would say, uh, not only do I hear them, uh, uh, when the windows are open, I hear them in every major living area in my home when the windows are closed. And as you, when you look at my exhibits, you'll see that my decks are clear. They've been that way for three years. I don't use them anymore because of the oppressive noise that I receive morning, afternoon, and night, seven days a week. Now, uh, the, say in this memo, facilities improvements about the fence. That's a four-foot cyclone fence, seventy feet alon- along, along the north edge of the playground. It has no impact whatsoever on noise. It's not mitigation. They talk about, uh, 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 the fence, um, making it clear to, uh, playground users and Ash Creek students. Well, the playground users they're talking about is the public that comes on after Ash Creek leaves. Uh, they, th- there's an admission.
Doug, I apologize. You have thirty seconds to go, so if you can.
Okay, when there's a, there's an admission that it is a public playground and that, uh, they're talking about developing, uh, appropriate signage. Well, that's the signage that was taken down. If you look at my exhibit, three B, you'll see what they intend to, uh, put up. And lastly, I'll just finish by saying, uh, when you're considering, uh, imposing, uh, conditions such as a sound wall, which does appear in the initial February, uh, two thousand twenty-four, uh, designs. Uh, in addition to that, in a, uh, email I have from Sharon Jarman, the trustee chair of the church, says that we have installed a fence and will provide a lock. The combination will be available only to Ash Creek and Murray Hills Christian cer- church. A sign will be posted which states this area is unavailable after six P M or words to that effect. All I'm asking, uh, if you're going to approve this in any way, shape, or form that you impose significant conditions and limit the enrollment to twenty, that's something that, uh, I think we can agree worked for a number of years with the Montessori school, but not with the mega playground and not with an expansion to, uh, enrollment of sixty. Uh, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, are there any questions of the speaker? I do not see any. Thank you, Doug, for your time. Do we have anyone else who wishes to speak in opposition to the application? I see, uh, Motion Shojafar. I'm so sorry if I said that wildly wrong. Please state your name and address for the record.
I, I am Motion Shojafar. You said my last name very well. Thank you. But, um, regarding the Ash Creek expansion, above everything all neighbors said in opposition, I just wanted to mention that, this expansion will impact, uh, our constitutional rights, particularly if it affects our rights to have a quiet enjoyment of our property. And, um, this is protected under state laws and, uh, is to violate our property rights here. Also, um, regarding planting some, uh, planting in the, uh, wetland, the green area, we already have bushes, trees from eight feet tall to about fifty-foot tall trees, and it doesn't block it. And a part of that, some house, like Doug's house next to playground has second story. And if we wanna install fence or sound wall to block the noise, it should be at least tall as the second story of that house, uh, which I don't think is possible. Um, these are our concern, and, uh, one of the Ash Creek staffs said Washington County is deserts of childcare. If it's true, that's okay. They can expand their business in other area. We already have, three childcare in not more than twenty feet of our home, uh, specifically, specifically my home. Uh, we have Ash Creek. We have one down to one fifty seconds street and one, um, until Bolivar. So I think it's enough for our neighborhood, and we need the the, we need the quiet of, uh, neighborhood more than anything else. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, are there any questions of the speaker? I do not see any. Thank you very much. So, um, next appears to be Kay Cushing. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Excellent. Kelly Cushing. One zero one five zero, Southwest one hundred and fifty first place. We are literally across the wild area, the ravine from the playground. We were on the recent call and a couple weeks ago, so definitely appreciate this additional time to speak. As we live in very close proximity to the playground, I feel it's very important to share our input. Um, what's already been shared about the noise and the traffic is absolutely true. The noise is intolerable. It's very stressful, and it's out of control. There's yelling, shrieks, crying, screaming, et cetera, and it can be heard inside our house with windows and doors closed, as everybody's mentioned, let alone trying to enjoy any time being outside. The noises from both the children and the adults at times. It really feels like the tax-paying property owners have no escape from this growing noise invasion. We addressed all these concerns in April of twenty twenty-three as well, and that noise has only worsened. The staff and volunteers watching the children have proven that they do not care about mitigating the noise, the worsening noise, or they do not care about the surrounding neighbors. If this business wants to expand, what do businesses do when they outgrow their current location? They move to a more suitable location. I'm not sure why that is not happening here. It's been confirmed the daycare users do not live in this vicinity. So why are the business owners insisting on forcing this business expansion on this small church property? It seems to make no sense for the property and definitely no sense for the neighborhood. So I strongly oppose this proposed business expansion and would really appreciate your support to decline it. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, are there any questions of the speaker? Nope, it doesn't look like any. Thank you very much. Do we have anyone else who wishes to speak in opposition? I see Melissa Blake. Please state your name and address for the record. Melissa, I think you are muted. Are you able to unmute? Melissa, you are still muted. Melissa? Melissa, I'm not sure if you can unmute. Melissa, I'm afraid that this does not look like it's working. Hey, um, Melissa, uh, you may need to Hey, Melissa, you may need to log back in, but I think we need to move on to the next speaker. Hopefully you can rejoin us and get, get the mute working correctly. Oh, wait. Yeah, thank you. Okay, so the next speaker I see with a raised hand is Brian. Please state your name and address for the record.
Sure. My name is Brian Coligan. I live at one zero zero seven nine Southwest one hundred and fifty-first place. Just want to reiterate a lot of the points that the fellow neighbors have commented on. No one's really in opposition of the opportunity for childcare and the benefit of kids. I myself have a seven-year-old here in the neighborhood, but I live four houses down, do partial work from home, sometimes in the office. And even with that buffer, four doors down, it's still readily available to hear that noise. So I can only imagine what some of those people are dealing with that are a little bit closer, you know. Again, it really comes down to those who are proponents for this. They are not necessarily directly from this area and have that either larger buffer or have the opportunity to leave, which allows them to not have to experience the noise. So just want that to be taken into consideration. And again, we all want the best for kids, but considering some of the things that Kelly mentioned there, it seems as though this group has kind of outgrown the space and maybe needs to consider additional options. Appreciate the consideration here. Again, twenty probably is enough. Sixty seems excessive, so appreciate the time.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, are there any questions of the speaker? Not see any. Okay, I know a couple people have had struggles with sound tonight. So I will ask again if there was anyone else who wishes to speak in opposition to the application. It does not appear so. So we will move on. Now is the time for those who are neither in favor nor in opposition to speak. Doug, I see your hand again. You've, you've already spoken. Is there something we need to address?
Procedural point, and that is this. Two individuals, Anne and Melissa, who they wish to speak, but because of this format, for whatever reason, they're having technical problems. I would ask the commission to leave this hearing open so that these two individuals, within a reasonable period of time, could submit their testimony in writing. And you just please give the technical, you know, information to whom and by when. And that would give them their, you know, fair due process to provide their input in opposition. So that's my request to the commission, and thank you.
Thank, thank you. Um, all right, so I do want to keep the public testimony moving for those who are neither in favor nor in opposition. Do we have every, anyone who's taking that neutral stance who wishes to speak? I do not see anyone. So now is the time for the applicant's rebuttal. The applicant's rebuttal is limited to five minutes. Please keep comments focused on issues raised during the public testimony portion, and please do not provide any new evidence.
Thank you. Once again, for the record, Daniel Hauser with Ash Creek Play School, a parent cooperative nonprofit preschool. The sound study that we submitted, not to raise new evidence, but to highlight one part of it that there may have been some confusion about, it clearly notes that there's no mitigation required. However, the church was curious about what mitigation options could be considered and asked for that assessment. A sound, a sound wall was considered but was not recommended as something we needed to do to comply with the law. And we're grateful to have families that attend Ash Creek now and in the past who've lived in the neighborhood. You know, as mentioned during the last round of testimony, that one of the people who testified in support of Ash Creek and of the design review letter and conditional use permit application, they have a neighbor who moved here, right, who moved to the house because of its proximity to the playground in our co-op. So fundamentally, we meet the approval criteria, and we will benefit families throughout Beaverton and within the neighboring community by being able to expand and serve more kids. So please move forward with your approval of our design review letter and the major modification of a conditional use permit.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions of the applicant? It does not appear so. So does staff have any final comments?
Thank you, Chair McCann, again, Steve Ragners, City of Beaverton. I just wanted to clarify a few elements raised in public testimony. There was questions of whether public notice was received. Public notice was provided before the initial hearing, consistent with local and state code. As the hearing on October ninth was continued to a date certain, there was no requirement for additional written notice on that front. There were questions of signatures and owner authorization. Those can be found in exhibit three point eight and three point nine of the applicant's materials. There has been reference to applicability of forty point oh three point one point K. That is the ADA facilities review. Staff in their memo identifies that as the play area expansion falls under designer new compliance letter, which is not subject to facilities review. Analysis for that criteria is not required. It is correct that all areas should need to respond to and comply with applicable ADA requirements. However, for this land use approval, that is not required. I think those were all the notes I had. I will leave it there.
Thank you.
So, yes, if I may also add, you do have a request for a continuance, which you might want to consider before you close the record, close the hearing. And I just want to remind you that you don't have the statutory obligation to grant it. You have the full discretion on whether or not to grant it. I do want to also note that we are getting, and Steve can probably hone in on the exact timeframe, but we are tight on our one hundred and twenty-day deadline to make a decision.
Okay. Robin, before you step away, I did, maybe this is a question for you, but I, even before Doug mentioned it, I had some concerns about the fact that we have two folks who wanted to testify, but we're not able to get the Zoom system to work, for whatever reason. What is the sort of method for dealing with that when the function isn't allowing someone to speak who wishes to?
Well, I, I will say that there have been multiple opportunities to testify, to submit written evidence into the record. Not only was notice provided before the first hearing and opportunity to submit written testimony, but there was a first hearing, and then that hearing was continued to today, and so there was another opportunity. So there have actually been multiple opportunities as far as meeting our obligations to provide a hearing. We, we've met them, but again, it is the planning commissions, up to the planning commissions, your discretion on whether you would like to grant a continuance to receive additional testimony.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, are there any additional questions? Or do you want to discuss the, the consideration of a continuance?
Yeah, I think we should discuss it. I'll leave room for any other questions, so just in case. If you don't mind, I'll, I'll kick it off. I, I personally am, I'm not, as, I, I agree with Robin about the, the adding commentary or testimony, so I'm not, I'm not worried about adding a continuance for that factor. The, the specific request for a continuance off the basis of being able to further analyze evidence is interesting. Looking at the, the audio, the, the sound impact report that came out just shy of two days ago or so, and, and having a, having a chance to respond to that. I, I think that we owe it to, we owe it to our citizens to be able to respond. I don't know if we owe it that we have to create room or time for someone to engage an outside expert to respond on, on their behalf. So I'm, I'm a little on the fence, but I, I, I would understand kind of one direction or another. So I would love to hear from the fellow commissioners.
Does, does anyone else have thoughts on that matter? Commissioner Lawler?
Um, okay, so, I mean, I appreciate that the frustration of folks who wish to speak and they were unable to. And I do believe that the, this format does sort of make technical issues more likely. However, we have had a, a lot of public testimony, primarily, especially in opposition. And I think that the issues that have been raised by the the group of people in opposition, I haven't heard any new testimony tonight, basically. And so I guess I'm, I'm sort of doubting whether reiterating other points that have already been made. I'm just assuming that that's what, and maybe that's a bad assumption, but that's my assumption, is that there would be reiterating information that's already in the record. And then as far as an opportunity for another noise study, I guess I'm grappling with the fact that it seems like staff has really presented a lot of information in the record to illustrate that noise studies are not required. I mean, to me, this, the criteria, I don't want to get into my concluding remarks, but I mean, I'm looking at the, the criteria and it's minimal impacts on livability. And, you know, you could say livability is noise, and you can then try to quantify that. But I'm not sure adding time to have more information in the record about noise amounts is useful for this matter.
Thank you. And I think, Commissioner Lawler, I think you make a good point that it's, it's not very clear at this point that there would be additional new information that comes out of that additional time. So I think that is a, that is a question. Commissioner Ellis, how are you feeling?
No, that's, I, I, I think that's sensible. I think that makes sense. Yeah, I, I, I understand the, I understand the impetus to ask for it, but it makes sense, I think, in light of everything else that, that we've seen. So I, I'm not, I'm not violently in, in favor of it, so without, without a majority of you all agreeing.
Yeah. I, I am curious, and maybe this comes back to Robin, if, if at some point there were another sound study done that showed that the playground was not in compliance with whatever was deemed the applicable criteria. And I, we're hearing different things about what, what is applicable to this site. But if it were not in compliance, then my assumption would be mitigation would be required to address that. It wouldn't be an issue of not being able to have children or have the play school here. It would be an issue of having to deal with the sound. Is that true? I mean, if you're, if you're in violation of a sound code, you have to address the sound, not the use.
And, and I just want to reiterate what Steve had mentioned earlier, that the DEQ noise regulations, the sound regulations are DEQ's regulations. So they, they implement and enforce them. And the actual noise standards, they're not, they're not a, they're not an approval criteria for this application.
Sure.
So, I mean, it's, it's relevant to like the noise levels, but we aren't the ones that will enforce those.
Yes.
Specific testables, so to speak.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you. Okay, so Commissioner Ellis, then are you suggesting you're okay with not having a continuance?
Yeah, I'm not suggesting a continuance, yeah.
Okay, all right. Commissioners, are there any other comments from you? Otherwise, I will close. Close the public hearing. All right, I will close the public hearing and as a standard procedure, randomly poll commissioners to state their conclusions on the application. Commissioner Winter.
Okay, well, it's unusual to have unity piece so opposed to ten students or twenty students or students or sixty students that are there for five hours a day. I can't help but believe that there's something going on behind the scenes that we're not being led into because it's, I'm, I'm struggling with this because there are schools all over the city. There are childcare facilities all over the city. This is a big site. And it seems that it's driving people crazy. And I'm just really struggling with why that possibly could be happening. And you've got little bitty kids outside for an hour, two or three or four or five, different parts of the day, and it's driving the neighbors crazy. I'm, I'm, I'm really struggling with that. Aside from that, I haven't heard anything, I think staff has done a phenomenal job of being very specific about each one of the issues involved that we need to be aware of, and I'm in favor of the application.
Thank you. Commissioner Lawler?
And I, I have struggled since we last had our first hearing on this regarding the issues involved in this. And, and I kind of went over a couple of the criteria, looking at mostly the modification of conditional use, because that's really the, the crux of the matter, the taking it from twenty students to sixty. And notice that comp plan policies that the applicant mentioned, which that's cited forty fifteen fifteen four C three, talks about, they specified how livability, you know, there's an enhancement to livability in an area that has good childcare coverage and educational opportunities. Can't dispute that. But then two sections later, we have forty fifteen fifteen four C five that talks about, to me, is more specific to this, because the other one is talking about comp plan. This is talking about the location size and functional characteristics of the proposal are such that it can be made reasonably compatible and have a minimal impact on livability and the appropriate use and development of properties in the surrounding area. And to me, that's what I'm really struggling with, is that, you know, if we have one or two people talking about it being noisy, you know, could sort of like say, well, maybe there's a balance there. But like Commissioner Winter said, when you have a, a whole host of neighbors complaining about what otherwise seems to be a fairly limited noise created new use, you sort of wonder, well, maybe there is something unusual about the location of this site. And so, you know, I guess the, the bottom line is, is that who defines minimal impacts on livability? And I guess that's the planning commission. And I'm really grappling with the fact that noise has, has come up. I don't think traffic's an issue. I think the traffic has been addressed, and there's a pretty easy way in and out of this site, and it does adjoin a collector. And I think that that's, of all of the issues raised, probably one that's been addressed. But I, I'm still stuck with the noise, and, and I do not believe that enhance or increasing the number of children will have a minimal impact on the livability. So I am going to vote in opposition of, of the expansion.
Commissioner Ellis?
Yeah, I, I think I share, I think I share similar worries to everybody. I think that the, I, I think some of the, some of the opposition items that were brought up are, are just outside of our scope and, and, and I'm not worried about them in the context of making a decision here. I, I agree with Commissioner Lawler. I'm not worried about the traffic piece. You know, some people have made statements around that property values and so on, and that's not for us to, to talk about here. That's not our scope, and there's other avenues for that. And, you know, for folks who've talked about how this is purely a business venture and businesses should move on and find a bigger space, and how we don't need more childcare in the area. And just to be blunt about it, that's just not accurate, and that's not how this works. So, so I support the idea of, of opening additional childcare slots, especially at the, at the price range that, that this is, and so on. um especially at the, at the price range that that this is and and so on. The thing that hooks me is that, is that if if this were building from scratch, then the the approval process would be robust and would consider a lot of things that aren't kind of being weighed here today or aren't in scope of these applications. Um we would probably go deeper into the noise item. We'd go deeper into the 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 actual like facilities approval part of it as opposed to just the design compliance catch-up aspect, central plane catch-up. So that that that's the part that hooks me, and you can't really do one of these applications without the other necessarily. You can't, like, we can't, we can't go from twenty to sixty without also approving the playground, um I think. So so they're intermingled. So like, if I was doing the my my heart says more childcare is better, but the process is so convoluted here. And and there's so many missteps that I would have loved to have seen an opportunity to really rebuild from scratch and try to identify all the areas that that could have been fixed or or updated to begin with. So I'm I'm leaning towards uh disapproval of the application. I don't know, I need like, need like two minutes to stare at a wall or something and think about it. But that's where my head's at.
Alright, thank you. Um and I think I agree with my fellow commissioners that this has been a real challenge. And I think that um Commissioner Winter may have, you know, said it well in that it, as well as Commissioner Lawler, that if this were a neighbor, um that would be one thing, but there seems to be a really significant amount of folks in opposition, particularly to the sound. Um and I think that we are in a situation where perhaps this is not a minor impact, but in fact, a major impact on livability within the area. Uh it was noted by some of the speakers today that um with the smaller group of children, this wasn't really a problem. But the idea to now expand this to be sixty um is is not going to be a minor change. So from my perspective, I don't think that this is really meeting the criteria uh and and is at risk of of creating a major um negative impact on the livability within the neighborhood to make this change. So personally, I am feeling that I'm in opposition, um but I, it is a challenging, is a challenging moment to say that, um because it is a use that we would like to see, but there's, there's something going on here. Yes.
I would just like to, um in response to Commissioner Ellis's comment about the the design review compliance letter and the conditional use, the commission is not obliged to approve or disapprove all the applications in the same way. It is possible to split those approvals. The implications would be that the playground expansion would then not be permitted, right? So it's not a, it's not that it's a simple thing in practical terms, but from a technical perspective, they could be, they could be separated out. I just wanted to share that. I don't know if um Robin McIntyre has any other um clarifications she wishes to offer.
That, that, that's fair. Thank you. Thank you for responding to my, to my thoughts there. It's a good clarification.
Well, with that, um would anyone like to put forward a motion?
Uh unfortunately, I'm in favor, so because those that are opposed to it find the criteria that they need to address their arguments.
Commissioner Lawler, do you want to try?
Okay, so um I don't have all the based on the facts and findings, um found in the I'll just say listed on our agenda. Can I get away with that?
Sure.
Uh I move that we deny case file LU three two oh two three dash zero zero five five seven, the Ash Creek Play School, including conditional use or CU three two oh two three dash zero zero five five five, based on the facts and findings found in this, in section, in the testimony received uh first hearing and at the second hearing and based on a failure to um adequately address section four oh fifteen fifteen four C five impacts, uh it would not have a minimal impact on livability in the area, this expansion.
Commissioner Ellis, did you have a question?
Uh yeah, apologies, Commissioner Lawler. Just before we 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 vote on kind of an overarching piece like that, are there any potential conditional uses? Um and and I'm struggling for like technical language that I could apply, but that we could apply to either one of the two applications, either the twenty to sixty facility piece or the playground compliance review. Are there any conditional uses that we could suggest or attach to either of those two that would put either of these measures over the line?
Should we discuss this?
I think you mean conditions of approval, Commissioner Ellis.
Sorry, yes, yeah.
So meaning require a twenty foot high sound wall? Personally, I I think that I I don't necessarily feel comfortable putting that as a condition of approval. But you know, if if someone wanted to come back with that, couldn't that be a a future submission if they really wanted to do that or have some other means of mitigation? Commissioner Lawler, your hand is raised.
Yeah, I I I agree that um it seems like there's been so many, I mean, the noise study has some ideas in it. But I think it, a more robust discussion of of that would probably be necessary before I would feel comfortable picking a condition of approval. Anyway, that's just my thought. Because it would probably, yeah, anyway.
So and then my second question, Commissioner Lawler, um your motion included um the conditional use application, but did not include the design review application. Was that intentional?
That was intentional.
Okay. Alright, so we, we do have a motion to deny um CU three twenty twenty three dash zero zero five five five. Do we have a second?
Apologies, chasing mute. I'll second that.
Okay, alright, so is there any discussion? Okay, a vote will be taken by roll call. When your name is called, please say yea or nay. Um yea, meaning you are in favor of denying. Uh Commissioner Winter?
Hey.
Commissioner Ellis?
Hi.
Commissioner Lawler?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. So the motion is, uh so the motion passes uh three to one. Do we need, do we need to have a second motion on the design review?
I'm happy to offer.
Okay.
I move that we approve the uh case file DR one two oh two four dash zero 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 nine zero based on the facts and findings on the, in the staff report and um for the Ash Creek Play School and the um record that has been created in the last two hearings and the exhibits that have been submitted and shown on our agenda.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, so uh is there any discussion? Alright, a vote will be taken. Uh when your name is called, please say yea or nay. Commissioner Winter?
I'm in favor of the design review compliance letter.
Commissioner Ellis?
Aye, as well.
Commissioner Lawler?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. The motion passes unanimously. The planning commission's decision will be memorialized in land use orders that will be provided to all parties that provided oral and written testimony. If you would like to appeal this decision, you must appeal in accordance with the applicable provisions in the Beaverton Development Code and the rules of the Land Use Board of Appeals. With that, we are now adjourned at seven forty six P M.